Five at 6:00 PM. Call to order, we're going to start to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor File.
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here, Treasurer Brown.
Here.
Trustee Hayward.
Here.
Trustee Marocco.
Here.
And Trustee Almuthu.
Here.
Trustee Tetter is absent this evening, we have a quorum.
Excellent. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So we have board announcements. Do we have any board announcements? No? I do. I have one. I would like to take this opportunity that our budget analyst, Rick, has decided to part ways, really kind of retire. Rick started his career here back in 2010 as a deputy supervisor, actually, from 2010 to 2011. From 2011 to 2014, he became the budget analyst. He was part-time, and I believe under Supervisor Kittle, he became full-time from 2014 to 2017. Little interesting thing there. And then from 2017 to 2025, he became budget and operations analyst. So he is going off to live his best life, and I think anytime anybody puts in, you know, the 15 years there, they deserve a little recognition, so I appreciate it, Rick. Thank you for your time. Any other board member? Okay? Any public announcement? Okay, great. I'll close public announcement, board announcements. Any public comments? And just so we're clear on this, you will come up to the podium and talk about, I'm sorry, give your name, address. Speaker goes to podium, deadline of time, sales limit, there are comments to no more than five minutes, and it's not about anything on the agenda. Okay? So if it's something already on here, you'll just wait for that time. Does anybody have anything there they want to talk about? Is there anybody online? I don't think so. Okay, so we'll close public comments. Public hearings, we don't have any. Today, we get a presentation from Treasurer Brown about the first quarter investments.
Hi, Paul.
Hi. Paul Brown, 8684. You have to give all that. Just real quick, something I probably haven't said in a number of times for the public. Presentation of an investment report is required under state law. And so that's one of the reasons this happens, for transparency, so the board understands where we're at with the townships' investments and monies. And it's actually stated on here, if you look at the bottom down here, it's small words, "This report is intended to satisfy the reporting requirements as established under Public Act 20 of 1943." The state takes great, went to great lengths for a number of years to make sure, to do all they could to protect what the treasurer does when they invest money, and that's the reason, one of the reasons this report's here. This should be fairly quick this quarter. There's not a lot of significant changes in the charts you'll look at. We do have more money in maturity in one day, which means it's liquid. But I also have a number of things coming up that we know we're going to have to pay for, a million dollar fire truck. We've got 3.2 million in special assessments for roads that we're going to fund doing in short term. The police contract, that's been getting cleaned up with the changes that happened, so we're going to end up paying four or five months at once. So we have a little bit more liquidity right now because we're going to have some more expenses coming up quickly. Not a lot of change here either. Average weighted maturity, 56.56, a little over half of a year. That went down a little bit because, again, I've got some extra money ready to pay the bills that are coming up. Our average weighted yield has gone up a bit, 3.58%. You'll see down in here, and I've started dropping some of these off from prior quarters that were, you know, million dollar, total million dollar losses or more. We're now down to, we had a little uptick in our loss, and the market's been kinder to us this last quarter, it's cut it more than a half. And likely at the end of the second quarter, we'll probably start seeing positive numbers in this, and we'll have some unrealized gains for a change, so that'd be nice. This section shows total funds and who they're with. Again, JP Morgan Chase is our primary bank account, where we have multiple checking accounts. And we use multiple security brokers. Anytime we bid, if I'm going to invest money, I ask for quotes. I get the Q-SIP numbers for the things we need so that I can ladder them out to open spots in the coming year, year and a half, where I want to fill it in knowing things are going to be coming to maturity when the bills are due. And I do an email to the different brokers and ask them to give me the quote. The best quote wins. And so we've been fortunate to have some good competition with these brokers. One thing we've changed, and now I'm going to go to the holding report. This is something new in the last couple of years, where we present every investment that we hold. This is, I think, really important. I don't know a lot of townships that do this. I think it's really important so the board always sees, and the public, exactly what's been invested in. It includes when it was purchased, the maturity date, the cost basis, the value, the yield or the interest rate on it, and the unrealized gains and losses over here in this column. The change for this quarter is that, and this came out of the Investment Advisory Committee meeting, one of the questions from one of the members was, this report didn't used to have the checking accounts on it, or the money market accounts that have our road millage and those things in it. And he felt like we really should have that because this should tie out to everything else. So if I go back in here, my portfolio value's $70 million, and that agrees with this, but the holding report would not agree to that, and it does now. So when you go to this, it matches. I won't talk about the investments down here, but I do want to talk about this top section, which is the things that have maturity dates of 4.1, that means that's liquid. Okay, it means we can get the money tomorrow. This includes a number of things, and I'll talk about a couple of them. You look at the general checking account, here it has $7 in it, okay? A change that happened on that was, we created a sweep account. So every night, whatever money's in the general checking account sweeps into a money market that is paying, and in fact, I'll show you which one it is here. It's the line item here with 8.7 million in it, and it's earning 3.79%. And so the money goes out at 5:00 in the afternoon, goes into this investment tool. This particularly is designed for municipalities. So it is a public funds money market, pays 3.79%, and the money's in there overnight, they pay us the 3.79%, and boom, it's back in the checking account the next morning to cover whatever checks are coming in to clear and what other needs are for the township. There's a few other checking accounts on here with smaller amounts. There's one here that took donations for playgrounds. There's an account down here for eBay, right? So if we sell something on eBay, the money goes into this account, and it's reconciled by the finance department, and then it will eventually be moved to the general account. You'll see the rates on the liquidity here, 4.3% on a number of them. The Comerica, you'll see there, it's at .75%. I would never leave money sitting there like that. This is actually an investment that matured right at the end of March, and so boom, when it matures, they put it into this cash account at Comerica. That money's since been transferred back to the township. But that takes a couple days to make that happen. And I just, I wouldn't leave it there with that kind of rate. So we have standing orders when investments mature, that the investments, the money gets transferred back into a checking account I have that is for investments. So we have one of these checking accounts here, let's see, JP Morgan Chase. There it is. So this investment, it's called the investment clearing account. This is another one we set up some years back so that all the investment activity could be in its own account. It's easier for the finance department to do the reconciliations every month when that, when those transactions aren't sort of mixed in with all the general activity. So our standing orders from our brokers are, when something matures, put it back in this account, we finish everything up, and then I can reinvest it from there. That's it for this report. I will tell you that the next report, and we had conversations on the investment committee to talk about another change, and that will be that we'll add to this report down here, another section that shows how much of the money, the $70 million, which fund is it for? How much of it's for the police millage? How much is the fire millage? How much is the general fund? How much is water and sewer? Breaking that down to give the board a understanding of where that all falls is important. I think it's really important for the public. Because to look at a big number, like sometimes this number's at 70 million right now, usually it's closer to 50, to see that big of a number without some additional context really leaves a lot of questions in people's minds that they shouldn't have. So going forward, this report's going to break that down so the public will understand, here's where the money's at, and here's what it's committed to.
Going forward, will you indicate on this report, though, which is the sweep account and title it sweep going forward, so we know? Because there's several, that's cash, money, funds, and bank deposit.
Uh huh.
Will you like hyphen or something and just indicate that that's the sweep account since you talk about it, so then?
Sure, I'll update that, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll get more clarity on this. I'm also going to add the, description's good. We're going to add the actual account number, the last four digits of the account numbers in here as well that we talked about, so thank you for bringing that up. Any other questions?
Thanks, Paul.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, carryover postponed agenda items, there aren't any. Consent agenda. One, request to approve the Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes of May 6, 2025. Two, request to approve the May 13, 2025 check run, including ACH for $297,142. Ratify the May 9, 2025 payroll for $361,139.60 in the February/March 2025 EFT-ACH wire activity of $667,678.47, $444,268.74. Number three, request to adopt resolution number 2025-018, granting permission for removal and nest egg destruction of mule swans on Deer Lake. Request to approve 2025 budget amendment number 13, Clarkson Community Garden, number, the McCord Garden. Number five, request to approve 2025 budget amendment number 14, which is the hawk traffic signal on Walden Road. Request to approve Brady Lodge rental with alcohol June 15. Request to approve Brady Lodge rental with alcohol June 19. And request to approve Brady Lodge with alcohol July 19.
One second.
Sorry.
June 29th, July 19th. There we go. Okay. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. There aren't any items removed from the consent agenda for the regular business. Okay, after being recognized by the chair's member, the public shall have the opportunity to address the board on items listed on the agenda. Speaker must go to the podium, identify himself or herself, and limit, there are comments to no more than five minutes. There shall be no further comments received from the public once the item has been brought back to the board for discussion and a vote. Please remember, the board does not engage with you at the podium. First item up, request to approve contributions to the public road improvement program, N-RIP, we call it here, Neighborhood Road Improvement Program. So the request is approved, the contributions to the public road, just went through that. This is actually mine, and during the process of going through and allocating resources for the three SAD paving programs, the N-RIP covers kind of the engineering funds. It's usually between 50 and 100, or 50 and 100,000. We gave money to two of the three SAD paving projects. Somehow Chestnut Hills got overlooked, and so we're just here to kind of correct an omission in the past. Board, any questions?
I'll just make a quick comment. I heard from one of the HOA members who said these projects are about 50% complete and going well, so.
Any comments from the public? I don't think we have anybody online. So can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. Move to approve a one-time contribution of $100,000 to the Chestnut Hills Homeowners Association for a road improvement project, subject to the terms and conditions of the township's Neighborhood Road Improvement Program, with payment being made upon project completion in 2025.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, number two, request to approve the assessing contract between Independence Township and Springfield Township 2025, and make a budget amendment number 16 for $1,000 for the anticipated gas expenditure to provide the contract and to be able to receive the $103,115, which is the value of the contract. This is Independence Township's assessing that has excess capacity right now, and we are looking to lower our overall internal costs. So we either had a couple options. We could either outsource it 100%, we could cut staff, or we could go and try to increase revenue. So we decided as a group from the assessing department through me to go out and take the opportunity that the county has presented. The county decided to raise rates for assessing on the 34, I think, was it 34, Greg, or 32? 32 townships that it does assessing for, and they raised it anywhere from 50 to 100%. So that opened the door for an opportunity for people to have their assessing in-house, like Independence Township, to be able to go out and try to be neighborly and help out our neighbors. Springfield Township is obviously one of our neighbors, they touch our borders, we have other programs with them through the Parks and Rec that we work with them on the SRO, so we kind of have a history of having a neighborly relationship. So we went out and bid it on their assessing project, and that was the value of 103,000. Before we go any further, is there any questions on it from the board? Is that you raising your hand?
Sure, I'll start. So I just want, so with the Director of Assessing leaving, how is that void getting filled?
So we have, Independence Township had two Level Four assessors, which is heavy, truth be told, and with Kim leaving, which is the director, previous director, Greg, who is the other Level Four assessor, is now the interim director. So that spot has been filled by him. Greg has been here for five years at Independence Township under Kim, and previously was with the county doing assessing through their program.
Okay, so are we filling that his position?
At this time, there's no need.
So I guess I'm trying to still figure it out. So we got one less person, but we're going to take on Springfield Township. So how, just can, is, how is that, how does that work? That we, with what, with 20% less staff, we're going to take on a township of half our size, so that my, you know, I just am not clear on how that, how the math works out on that, that we're not going to be overwhelmed, or we're not going to take a hit right now doing it.
So that's a great question, right? Obviously, one that should be addressed. And what we had is, we had excess capacity, as I was stating earlier. So we had more staff than we necessarily needed for Independence Township in the volume of parcels. So again, it goes back to, we looked at different options. I had many conversations with our current assessing department, all of them involved, and we had conversations about what could we take on from additional business. And so it really wasn't even so much limited to just the number of parcels, but the type of parcels. So we had opportunity, we had a lot of opportunities, truth be told. We had everything from people saying, look, we're not even going to go out to do an RFP, just tell us you're going to take it, we'll give it to you. The problem we had with some of those is that they were discontinuous, so they were further down south, so there were some issues logistically with that. The other thing was the types of properties were involved. Orion wanted us to do it, Oxford wanted us to, but they were much more heavier commercial than we are. And so what we ended up doing is saying, you know, instead of going out there and trying to grab them all up and form a business out of it, we said, let's take a look and find ones that are very similar to who we are, and that's why we looked at Springfield and really only the Village of Clarkson. So it's only those two that we're looking to do because we're very, very similar in nature. And so adding that on with the excess capacity we have and improving our processes, we've gone through and started re-engineering some of the processes, the ways the work was being done, you know, what we call kind of internally right sizing to the task. We had individuals that were doing tasks that somebody that was more based in the office and not an assessor could do, which would free up significant amount of time for the assessors because they were doing that type of work and research internally themselves. So we're finding, not only from the standpoint that we had some excess capacity, but we're also improving the process, which is freeing up a lot of time for them to be able to take on that extra amount of work.
Who's going to be doing that research for them?
So the type of research is pretty much just looking up the parcels, and looking on there, finding the map, looking at the parcel and everything else. So we have, we already have somebody in-house who stays in-house full-time, so she'll be looking at doing that. We have another person who was working part-time, we've just switched that out with a different part-time person. So from that work, we've got that pretty much covered.
Are they under that same budget?
All in the same budget. We are not increasing the budget at all.
So what about the people that, so, still trying to figure the, so there's a couple things that, like with the, when a house sells and somebody looks it back up on the multi-list, finds out what improvements have been made, then goes back, you know, looks at what was originally assessed, you know, that's how we find out, people finish their basements, do these home improvements, add additions, things without permits, you know what I'm saying? Is that still going to be?
Yeah, so that's all going to still happen. We're still integrating with the building department to be able to get the people that actually follow the rules and pull permits and all that, so. Yeah, nothing's really changing from, it's So yeah, nothing's really changing from, it's really realigning the, so if we had Greg, for example, who is a level four, doing research that a twenty-dollar-an-hour part-time person could be doing, that person should be doing it. So it's a couple of hours a day that takes to do that research now Greg and his team assessors are no longer gonna be doing. That gives, you know, I think we figured out, you know, on that one process alone, it frees up roughly about ten to twelve hours a week for the assessors, and then you keep like compounding that across.
Okay, and I, we didn't see.
Do you have anybody else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just give me one more minute and we'll just move over.
Go ahead, I got more questions. Go ahead.
Uh, I, I just wanna kind of go back a little bit in history and Carrie, do you wanna maybe correct me if I'm mistaken? When we, uh, and again, this will be a nod to our, uh, the assessor we had, who has set up a department that when she leaves is ready to move forward, this is what we, you always want. And there's a reason we had two level fours here. The board actually talked about this, that we made some changes, I believe, in, in some of the positional salaries, because we knew we were keeping an extra level four here for continuity when, when the assessor decided to, you know, retire or move on. And so that's one of the reasons we could be pictured as being a little bit overstaffed, but it's intentional, because the last thing you ever want is the assessing department to have their level four go, go, move on or retire, and you weren't ready to step forward and move, move forward with the same kind of service you have. I think we're in a tremendous position to do that with Greg taking over, and again, the board kind of knew this a couple of years ago with the intention of being able to have a very nice, uh, and smooth transition. And so I'm, I'm, I'm pretty confident in the assessing department to do the things that are being talked about here. I work with them every day, so.
And I agree with what you're saying, but when that, when that process was discussed and what the plan was for Greg to take over, I don't think at that time there was anybody thinking about taking on another township and putting that also on the staff, you know, so the, there's, I just wanna make assurances that we're not gonna be, for just to make a hundred grand, which to me is not a very significant fund, if we're at any way compromised with our tax base, so.
Do you realize what it means to do that, though? I mean, that, you know, when you sit there and say our tax base, you know, you're talking about potentially issues going to the tribunal, which when we go to the tribunal, we make all twenty grand, but I found out it costs us thirty grand to go and try to get to twenty. So we're paying more than we're bringing in, um, and as far as the rest of it, I mean, that's the same team that's going out there and doing it, so I don't see a problem there.
Well, what I'm more worried about is, is, is staying up with, um, you know, staying up with the, you know, overseeing and overlooking each of the projects, because if we're not, if we're supposed to be reviewing twenty percent of the parcels every year, you know, um, for each of the five-year audits or whatever we do, and, um, I don't know that we hit that target date, because I don't have any data, I haven't talked to anybody about it, so I would like to know, are we hitting the twenty percent? And, um, and then I know that when we started the D D A, we, there was a lot of talk about having the D D A district all reevaluated, because that's gonna make a huge difference with the investment on the district, that if we haven't up, if we haven't upgraded our, our, um, our assessing in the D D A district, and then with the investment of the car wash and other projects, if those parcels aren't brought up to the current rate, when people sell them, we're going, we're gonna take, we're gonna get less of, less, um, T I F money, and, and that, and we're responsible to the county, the zoo, the, everybody to capture as much as we can from them. So what I, what I'm concerned about is that if we can't, if we can't get the D D A district done now before we invest all this money into it, there's gonna be a, we're gonna take a loss on, on, we, we're gonna make less than we would have made had we got the D D A, um, done. And I wanna make sure we're not gonna put that on the back burner to go make a hundred grand and, you know, working for a different township, and, and, you know, one of that, that's one of my biggest concerns is, and maybe Greg can speak to it, I don't know, but that, that we don't miss the, those opportunities, finding, finding properties that have been invested in that we didn't catch, updating our role adequately so that that difference has been created, so that when we, um, when somebody sells, we, we get that larger capture, Greg's denying, so I think I'm, probably know half of what I'm saying makes sense. But, um, so that's, that's where I'm trying to, I just wanna figure out how that's gonna work with taking on this extra responsibility and then taking on. I, and I, I don't know if I think that completely we're not working really hard, because I seen them work really hard, so I think that they were working hard. My second concern in this, I'll finish up with this right now, is we have a lot of resources when, when our director was here and Greg was here and everything, and it's been kind of pretty steady Eddie around here, but right at the time that we're taking on these other fifty percent of parcels, we got a huge housing development that's busting at the seams to be built, all this commercial property that's about to be built, the car wash that's about to be built, and that, I don't know if that's being calculated into when we said we had excess resources, because I have feeling, I feel like in the next year or two, that workload of the township's gonna really be exasperated because we have so much development that we've approved but hasn't been built or assessed yet. So I wanna make sure we don't thin ourselves out on that and the D D A thing. Those are my two biggest concerns, is that we got a lot more work coming and more work we wanted to do, and then we're taking on more work, and I, that's where, I don't see how we can do that without more staff, and you're saying there is some, I just need to know how we're gonna, you know, make time for all of this. Terry has her hand up, by the way.
Terry?
I guess to that note, I mean, things change as development happens. If eight months from now, we need another person, so we look at it, but why are we paying somebody eight months' salary when we might not need them? So I'm, just 'cause you approve this part doesn't mean that, you know, that staff person, or we're never gonna hire somebody in the assessing department, so it's giving a false presentation here that, you know, ride the wave, but if we can save money or make some money on here by having one less person, getting some income from here, let's see how it rolls out. It's all new, but it's not the end-all, be-all, so see how it goes. If they're overwhelmed, they come to the board, we look at the budget, we approve another position. I mean, it, it works out, but there's no sense paying for somebody if they can do the work with who they have there, so let's just see how it goes.
Yeah, I, I think it's an important note, Sam, that we have not filled Kim's position. Greg does not feel the need to fill Kim's position, but that doesn't mean Kim's position hasn't already been budgeted. So, I mean, right now, you know, that, if that need becomes true, as you're, you're concerned about, um, we still have it in the budget to go through and do it. Matter of fact, now we have excess money in the budget because of the fact that we've got the extra hunt. So I mean, as it stands right now, it's a forty percent reduction in the actual cash flow, but we still have the room in the budget if we need to go back and bring somebody else in. And I'm with trustee, now I'm out there in the sense of the fact that it's different, it's new, and I'd say, let's go, let's ride and see where it goes. It can't get any worse than where we were at.
No, I just, I don't, as long as I'm, there's assurances that, that you're saying we're gonna be able to do the D D A thing, and we're gonna be able to do things that we need to still do, because that's exactly what will be put on the back burner, because it, it's been on the back burner and it's supposed to have already been happening. So if it didn't happen when we had too much staff, I'm concerned it's not gonna happen when we don't have as much. I'm not talking about Kim's position, I never even mentioned Kim, I'm just talking staffing people, you know what I mean? Not who's in what position, just enough bodies to do it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. One would be, um, and because I, I'll be honest, I mean, this is kind of new stuff for me, but, uh, what would be, and I could ask you and then Greg as well, what would be the worst-case scenario here? I mean, what would be the worst thing that we would have to do? Hire an additional person?
We would have to hire one more, uh, level-three assessor.
Okay.
Which is gonna range somewhere in the neighborhood of around seventy, seventy-five thousand.
Okay, and then I would imagine we, obviously, because we have a empty, at least one empty that would easily cover that, so.
Yes.
And then what, what happens with the tax tribunal at that point?
So the tax tribunal, if you're asking about ours or Springfield?
Springfield.
Springfield, if the contract was written in such a way that they have to cover the legal costs of the tax tribunal.
Okay.
Uh, there's two sides to a tax tribunal, you have the resident and you have the commercial. Residents, we handle, we handle it here internally with our assessors. Commercial tends to go out, in our case, we go to the Kelly Group, and over in Springfield, it would go to their attorney need.
Okay, and then so, and then I guess the other question I had was basically, um, safety net, um, which would be hire more people at that point?
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to hire another person.
Right, and worst-case scenario, even if we broke even, we'd have, we've got plenty of coming back in, so.
Right, because the first thing we would come in, what, if you think about the budget, Kim's salary is, was the highest in the group, and we would be bringing in a level-three, which is in the middle, then we got the hundred, so even with all that, we would still see a reduction in the overall budget for that department, somewhere in the north of twenty-eight to thirty percent.
Okay, and then Greg, obviously, if I can ask him a question?
Yeah, Greg, watch, watch, hold on, please. Introduce yourself, Greg, please.
Hello, everybody. I'm Greg Bab, I'm the interim director of assessing for Independence Township.
Hi, nice to meet you.
My first time up here, very excited. Hey, girls.
So I, um, and I just basically wanted to, obviously, you're in, you feel that you're, you can handle this workload and everything else, but I did want to just even mention because Sam was asking about how to handle the, what's gonna happen with the new development over there, and what is your plan to, um, do, take care of the D D A and, um, which Sam actually don't know that much about, but it's like, what would you be, your plan to handle that, and then of course, with all the extra, the new things that we have going up here? And on top of that, with, of course, adding the extra township?
Obviously, we laid all of that out before we decided this was something we were going to do. We took a look at the workload that Springfield Township has as far as their permit load, the sales per year, what their reappraisal needs are gonna be, before we even decided to make this an option. Before Kim left, we had already written up a, or written up a plan for the D D A reappraisal, so the commercial areas in the D D A are going to be reassessed and reappraised this year, and that's something we've already put into play this year in our time budgeting. So the difference is, you know, we had a really great thing going under Kim, and I'm grateful for her mentorship, and she left me in a really nice position now, um, but we're really looking at the way we are attacking tasks and certain, you know, processes, and we're just streamlining them to make them the most efficient possible. So we don't have to have one person in soup, several different places at one time. We're gonna have cross-trained people who are able to independently attack the tasks here and in the other jurisdiction. So, I mean, we looked at it, we have a game plan, we're tracking all of the permit sales information and reappraisal information here to make sure, we have till July first, before it even starts, to make sure our, our house is in order, and then we're gonna be able to attack what they have going on and really come up with an awesome game plan for them.
Okay, thank you, and that's good, and I, and I trust that, not that I didn't think that there was a plan, but it's nice to hear, nice for everybody to hear too, what's, what's gonna happen with it, so thank you.
And we should also add that the unique thing about Springfield is that they have a, I don't
An assessing liaison, we'll call it.
There we go. They have an in-house assessing liaison that is also gonna participate and help, so it's almost like having another part-time person to, here, there, to go through and help as well.
So both township will have a front-facing, full-service individual that will be able to answer phone calls, be the face at the counter, everybody knows Whitney, and she's the best, so she will not change, and then they have, his name is Brian, he's fantastic, he has a, uh, M C A O level-two certification, so he's very up to all of the, um, current assessing statutes, and he'll be able to handle a lot of the day-to-day processing of paperwork, property transfers, and things like that there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any questions from the audience? Yep, please come up.
Good evening, Ray Llewellyn, nine-two-five-four Pine Knob Road. So this gentleman said he's level four. Well, what, what was level, what level was Kim?
Four.
Oh, so that's the highest. Okay, thank you.
Yep, I violated my rule because I wasn't supposed to interact, sorry.
Who could have given her a hand?
All right, can I get a motion on this, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Independence Township entering into an agreement to provide assessing services to Springfield Township and authorize the supervisor to execute the contract and approve the two thousand twenty-five budget amendment number sixteen as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. All right, next is to request to approve amendment one to exhibit A of the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-seven law enforcement agreement to ratify, allow me to sign that. Just a little backstory on that one. That was the police contract that Oakland County gave us, that motion two zero two-five dash zero-two dash zero-three-three, this board approved back in, uh, I think it was February or March, and what I was able to do was negotiate a kind of what we call, they call smoothing, so I'll use their term smoothing, and basically what it turned out to be is that for the first year, we are gonna get, if you took the full payment, divided by three, that's the way it was given to us, with a little bit of an escalated inflation cost every year. What we were able to negotiate was that that was too much of an abrupt height, I think everybody remembers that it was a fifteen-point-two percent increase from last year to just this year, uh, so what they said is that they will take that down by four percent, so that would turn out to be about eleven percent increase over last year, and defer that payment to the third year. So really what it amounted to is a four percent, um, interest-free loan over a two-year period of time. We still have to pay it, we just got to defer that payment until the third year without having to pay any interest on it. So since that is a new option on the contract, we went through and, you know, we would like to, I would like to take it. So any questions from the public on it? Any questions from the board? All right, can I get a motion then, please?
I'll move to approve amendment one to exhibit A of the two thousand twenty-five, twenty through two thousand twenty-seven law enforcement agreement and ratify the super, supervisor and clerk's signatures.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carried. Next item is to request to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-twenty-seven Marine Patrol Service Agreement for Deer Lake with Oakland County Sheriff's Department and associated, uh, two thousand twenty-five budget amendment number fifteen. For a little background on this, Deer Lake, uh, requests that a marine officer on a schedule comes out to the lake and patrols it, uh, the Deer Lake, what do they call themselves, the Deer Lake? There's an association named
Property Owners.
Property Owners, they pay a hundred percent of this, we're just asking for ratification, or, uh, a motion to be able to go through and offer this through the contract. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the board? All right, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-seven Marine Patrol Services Agreement between the Oakland County Sheriff's Department and the Charter Township of Independence for the purpose of providing marine patrol services per year on Deer Lake, subject to approval by the Oakland County Board of Commissioners and the Oakland County Sheriff. Accept payment of three thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars, fifty-two cents from Deer Lake Property Owners Association for year two thousand twenty-five, with subsequent annual payments to be paid to the treasurer's office to continue marine patrol services in years two thousand twenty-six and two thousand twenty-seven. Direct the supervisor and the clerk to sign the contract as the authorized representatives of the township and approve the two thousand twenty-five budget amendment number fifteen as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Regal Viscount number five is to request to adopt the resolution number two zero two-five dash zero-one-nine, modifying the two thousand twenty-five schedule of regular Board of Trustees meeting for June, July, and August. Again, a little back on this, is that every year we approve the calendar agenda for the Board of Trustees meeting, the regular meetings, and we work it out for the Board of Trustees meeting, the regular meetings, and we work it out so it's two times a month on a set schedule. This is asking that we modify June, July, and August to have only one meeting a month. And just as a trial run, there's, out of sixteen charter townships in Oakland County, eleven of them only meet once a month. As for anybody who attended these meetings, they've been going faster and faster. We think we can get it to work where we have only one time a month. But we're also thinking about the summer vacations and all that to be a little bit more accommodating to everybody. And we're going to run for a trial period. Any comments or questions from the audience, public? No? Board of Trustees? Mr. Trustee Morocco?
Check runs. How are we going to handle those every two weeks?
Excellent question. So what we were thinking is that on the first, if this approved, motion is approved, on June twenty-fourth, we would bring together a motion to be able to ratify the check runs, so there's not a delay in there. So we would ratify the payments so that we, they're not waiting a month for their payments.
We'll bring a policy forward for the board to approve to take care of those three summer months.
Without board approval, or how do you do it?
With board approval.
With board, we'll have, we'll have a policy change.
No, I get it, but like, if you get a, if you're getting it invoiced every two weeks, you know, to meet the deadline, how do you, how do we pay them?
We'll change the, the schedule. The schedule will be, will be changed for POs. It'll be amended to meet the meeting dates. And then the ACH payments are automatically, we usually ratify those, those still go out.
But the POs, does that mean that we're not going to pay every, weren't we going to pay once a month on POs instead of every two weeks, or? I'm still not clear, how do we approve it every two weeks to get the checks out to the subcontractors in the same timeframe?
Go ahead.
So the, the idea is, the same way that we currently ratify ACH payments that have happened, we've made the payments before the boards approved them. We do, we do this sort of regularly.
With subcontractors invoicing?
People who are being paid via ACH.
I'm not saying,
I'm sorry, I appreciate if you're not, this is where we shouldn't be going back and forth. So I'm going to share what I can, and then I'll, I'll leave it from there. For, for me, the reality is, in the twelve years I've been here, I don't recall us ever not paying a check that went on due, um, the agenda for board approval. And so the question for me is, I, I don't understand why, the budgets have been approved, the POs have been approved through multiple levels of improvement, and even, even to make, send somebody a payment for a hundred bucks, we now have to come back to the board again to say, can we pay them the hundred bucks? That's already been approved in the budget, and the POs have gone through a process. To me, I think there, there's a lot of payments that could happen where we're paying them, and the board gets to see them on the next, on the next agenda, to be able to look them over and review them. We may put a dollar limit on that so that if it's larger amounts, that we won't pay those without board approval. So I think we've talked a little bit about that, so it's not just going to be, we just can do it. But at the same time, it's always going to already have been budgeted and approved by the board to spend. So to me, I don't see it as a big issue. Again, twelve years, I've never seen us not pay a check that was due to somebody because the board said, don't pay. That's all I've got.
Okay, but that doesn't answer my question about invoicing. Are we going to be paying every two weeks, or are we only going to be paying once a week to the people who aren't ACH? Who are, you know, one of the reasons we get, we pay more than a lot of places is because we pay our procurement policies, and our pay is slow.
So I can, I'll answer it for you. The whole idea of ratifying is that we're doing a check run, and we're mailing the checks out. The board's going to, the ratify means you're approving it after the fact. So yes, we will still do two check runs, people will still get paid. But the one that happens before there's a board meeting, that information's going to be in the agenda and will be ratified. The ratified process means it's already taken place, and the board's saying, yes, we ratify that this was done. But again, we'll put limits on the process to make sure, I think, checks over a certain amount, maybe we won't do, but that'll be for the board to decide when that's brought.
I think Dan could weigh in on it, too. That would give you some, refine the fact.
Yeah, I think a policy's a good idea, but obviously, all townships ratify a number of payments even after the fact. So a reoccurring expense, or an expense that has been approved internally, can be paid and ratified by the township board after the fact.
Can I go further, just general contracts with landscapers, carpenters, painters?
I can't speak to all contracts. I'm a contractor, obviously, the payment's within thirty days. So that would give you within the window of one meeting per month. So I think most contracts,
I don't think that's, I don't think that's a true statement.
We're still talking about doing twice.
So I can go back and say, eleven of the sixteen do it once a month.
Okay.
And so you're, you're coming about it costing more because we're taking longer. I don't know how that can be longer than when we're doing it twice, and everybody else is doing it once. But we, again, if we can go through, we ratify, ratify means after the fact, the payroll, they're going to get paid.
Yeah, I'm just not in favor of it being any slower than we are, because I think it makes it harder for us to get better pricing from people, and people want their, they need to get their money.
So I agree.
And not, for us, it's to, we all have the ability to miss meetings, so if we got vacations or whatnots, we don't have to do them, but that's,
I do think, too, Sam, when we go into business with people and we tell them what our payment schedule is, they know ahead of time. And, you know, when we communicate and the departments are aware of what, if the schedule changes, and what the schedule is, and when payments will go out, they let the vendors know that. So the vendors know what to expect.
Okay. I guess, all right. If we're still going to not be, you know, if we're paying, still paying on time, I don't care whether it's rect, you know, ratified or not, that's fine, just so we're paying people, you know. I guess my second issue would be is public access to us, so we're cutting that in half, which isn't usually a big deal unless it's something controversial. And then just the, uh, to, I know that we're slow a little bit, which I wish we weren't. I think we're slow because we're not getting enough done, especially on the side of planning commission and ordinances and things I like to see done, which would busy us up if we could get some of that's housekeeping done that we had hoped to do, but that, um, just, I also don't want to get to the point where the meetings are overloaded, and then we're just blowing through everything because we're trying to jam it all into, into one meeting. So those are my three points that I would, I wanted to at least address, those three issues. Because we already have four or five-hour meetings sometimes, you know, and if we're only doing one a month, you know, I just don't want that to be overwhelming for us, and then we don't, we don't have enough time to spend on the items, you know, so. Those are my comments.
Yes. So you'd, you had mentioned that it was a trial basis, is the, is going forward the goal to have just one a month regularly, or?
No, I mean,
Because you mentioned trial, so I might,
I did say trial, I did say trial, which could imply that I meant to go forward.
Yeah.
That may have been a bad choice of words.
Okay.
I said, you know, let's do it for the summer, and see how things go. So I mean, if you want to use trial as a sense of the fact that we're going to do this and see how it goes, if everything goes smoothly and it works out great, then yes, maybe we would look at doing it further. I know there's some townships that only do one meeting for November and December, they combine it, and it's only one board meeting during that two months. So again, you know, it just depends, obviously, the, the load is an important thing, aspect.
Right.
Summer months look like it's a little slow, so, you know, let's take advantage of that opportunity to try this and see what can happen. I think it does bring about a, and to Sam's point, I think is, is a good one, is that, you know, we don't want to slow down the payment process.
Right.
And there are built-in currently a lot of delays. So I think this also gives us the opportunity to take a look at how we're paying our vendors. As Treasurer Paul brought up, is that we approve the budget, we approve the contract, and then we have to come prove the payment, and then we have to come back and prove the check. I mean, that alone builds in four to six weeks. If we start streamlining that, that can therefore turn around the payment cycle, make it shorter so these people can get paid faster.
Sure.
So I think there's some opportunities here, as like when I'm looking with the appraisal, assessing department, everything else, there's some opportunities here that are going to, we're going to start bringing forward about the procurement process and how we're doing that, much like we're doing with the fire department now, when they brought forward the, the idea to purchase the fire engine. I said, okay, let's also approve the contract, let's approve the payment. Right? All at once, it's better in the past, that would have been three separate meetings.
Right. Now, if we, if you decided, or we decided, say, all of a sudden, things start getting heavy,
Yep.
would you then call a special meeting?
That's always an option. So as a, as a supervisor, I can call a special meeting, or any two trustees can come together and call a special meeting, too.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's definitely some safety valve options there.
Well, I guess what, in my thought process then would be that, at least for this trial, that at least have a verbal commitment from the board members to keep that Tuesday available in case that we have a special meeting, just to say, leave it open, so we at least have a quorum if we do have to meet for something. Because my concern is that we call a special meeting, of course, and then there's not enough of us to meet, because for whatever reason.
Yeah.
So I don't know, that would be just, one thing that I would request, just for this trial, to see how it goes. Sure. No, I'm, I'm all about, thank you.
I'm fine with you leaving the Tuesday open for the trial, but there have been other times in the past when we need a special meeting, we just reach out to the board and say, can you come on Wednesday or Thursday? It doesn't have to be Tuesday. So I'm just saying there is flexibility there, but since it is new, I mean, most of us have our Tuesdays written down anyway, so I get it. But to let you know, it doesn't have to be scheduled on a Tuesday to be a special meeting.
I mean, I don't think we've ever had a problem anyway, anytime we've all been here, so it's, it's just a, just something. So that's all. Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion, please?
I'll move to adopt Resolution Number Twenty-two-five-dash-zero-one-nine, modifying the 2025 Schedule of Regular Board of Trustees Meetings for June, July, and August of 2025 as presented.
Got a second?
I support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Or is it a,
Say it's a roll call?
I'm sorry, it's a roll call.
Okay.
Can I get the roll call, please?
One second. Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Hayward?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
No.
Trustee Alamofo?
Yes.
Supervisor File?
Yes.
Clerk Newbeck, yes, motion carried.
Can we, and I know we just carried and everything else, but can we establish June twenty-fourth as the June meeting?
I think, let me see.
Does that lift the regular schedule?
Just double-check what the motion, or the resolution says.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to slide that in. It is. I'm looking at it right now, June twenty-fourth.
Yeah, the resolution says, uh, second Tuesday of each respective month, which not all of the meetings are on the second Tuesday, I don't think, but I think we're referring to the second meeting of the month we will keep.
Okay. So June twenty-fourth. Yep, June twenty-fourth. Okay.
Supervisor, since you're talking about it, can you just publicly list the other dates since,
So it's not the seventeenth.
Can you just call off the July and August since we're talking about it?
The July will be the twenty-second, and August will be the nineteenth.
Thank you.
All right.
And August, which August?
August nineteenth. Okay, that closes regular business. So next, it would be a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion to enter into closed session to discuss a written legal opinion regarding pending litigation pursuant to MCL fifteen-point-two-six-eight-one-H and MCL fifteen-point-two-four-three-A-G, and also discuss a written legal opinion regarding township board authority over downtown development authority budget under the REIT Codified Tax Increment Finance Act, Act Fifty-seven of 2018 pursuant to MCL fifteen-two-six-eight-H and MCL fifteen-two-four-three-G, and it is six fifty-seven PM.
Second.
Do we have to roll call on this?
Yeah. One second. Trustee Hayward?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Alamofo?
Yes.
Supervisor File?
Yes.
Clerk Newbeck, yes, and Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carried. Motion carried.
Let's make a motion to return from closed session and resume the regular meeting at 7:40 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And let's, I gotta find my agenda. All right, we have Communication Feature Agenda Items Reports. Report Fiscal 2024 Actual to Budget Comments Period Ending December 31, 2024. Fiscal 2025 Actual to Budget Comments Period Ending April 30, 2025. Report Oakland County Sheriff's Office April 2025. Video Center Minutes Administrative Board February 26, 2025. Any last board member comments?
I do.
Trustee Rocco.
I totally missed the point that you guys ditched the meeting in two weeks. So I'm gonna be asking someone to support me to bring a special meeting together. And I'm just saying, I'm concerned now that I've totally missed that because now it's gonna be the end of June before I get to make the presentation for the Woodland Ordnance. And then it's gonna be another two meetings, then it's another meeting at the Planning Commission, then it's another two meetings after that. I mean, we're talking with only one meeting a month, if I can't even start till then, it's gonna be September before we, you know, before we even get anywhere near putting these protections in place. So I'm not sure how to handle that. I'm sure I'll be in touch with you guys, but that's a real concern for me. I don't know how to fast-track it because we're taking an extra step that we normally wouldn't do. We normally, the Planning Commission would have sent it up for a public hearing first so we could bring it to the board for discussion and a reading. But we decided on this issue that we would bring it to the board. Chuck had made the suggestion to bring it to the board to get everybody's, you know, input on it prior to the normal procedure of setting the public hearing. So that's, you know what I mean? So that has pushed it back a couple of months basically because of the Planning Commission's next meeting and then the board meeting only once every month to get it, and then have a public hearing on the Planning Commission which won't happen until July, if, you know what I mean? And then it won't come to the board until August before you even get the first, the first reading on it. So I guess we'll have to play that by ear, how I could expedite that.
Yeah, we can work together.
Process. And I guess one way would be is does the board, does the board feel like they need me to make the presentation first or could we go back to setting the public hearing first and then bring it up for discussion? Or do you wanna leave it the way it is and maybe have an extra